Under the circumstances, we are all video conferencing for this board meeting. Before beginning the board meeting, I would just like to extend our thanks to Dr. Egan and to our administration, as well as all staff, teachers, DSCA, bus drivers, custodians, like I said, all staff, if I omit anybody, I am sorry. I just know that you have all been working vigorously these last few weeks. If you're on our call, you can mute your microphone. Thank you. I know everybody has been working to continue education for our students, to do childcare, to do lunch programs, everything that's needed for our district to keep running. So I do thank each and every one of you in doing your part and making Kings Park what it is today. So I just wanted to start with that before starting the meeting. Okay, as we begin every meeting, I would like everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we'll begin with our first presentation, our budget workshop, from Dr. Egan.
Okay, I am going to attempt to share my screen. If you just give me a minute, I will do that. Okay, hopefully, everybody is now looking at the budget PowerPoint?
Yes, it came up.
Okay, tonight is our fifth installment of the 2020-2021 budget. It's the fourth draft budget. And you'll see one really important update from last time, which is, we did a lot of work between the last budget workshop and tonight, and we are showing a budget gap of zero currently. We're anticipating a budget of $96,580,518. The budget-to-budget increase at 2.88%. Tax levy increase of 3.51%. And here's what changed since the third draft of the budget. We applied a little bit of additional fund balance, and I'll explain that in a minute. Our total applied fund balance, which is monies in one year's budget that goes into the next year's budget as revenue, we're still reducing by a little over $125,000. This was a trend that we wanted to continue. We want to continue to reduce that applied fund balance, and this was a district goal and also an audit recommendation. We made some calculated estimates about state aid, and I'll get back to that in a little bit. But currently, in the governor's budget, there was a quarter of a percent increase in foundation aid, which is roughly $24,000. We made the calculated guess that our final aid package would be half a percent, which is an additional $24,000 for Kings Park. You'll notice that even if the governor's budget is the final budget, we'd still be able to reduce our applied fund balance by $100,000, which is a good thing for us. We also did a little bit of shaving in a couple of codes, BOSI's codes, and we made some minor payroll updates based on, you know, some changes in positions that we expect next year. No changes of the number of positions, just, you know, who's going to be in which seat on the bus, so to speak, next year. These are our revenue projections that get us to our about $96.5 million. And this is that applied fund balance row that I was talking about. The current year, we had applied a little over $2.3 million into the current year's budget as revenue. Next year, we'd want to step that down a little bit to 2.2 million. This is a $125,000 decrease, which is the direction we want to see that go in. And again, even if the state budget comes back and the governor's proposal is the final proposal, we can still decrease that by $100,000, which is a good thing and our goal and the audit suggestions. So here's where we are right now. We have our bucket of things that we want in next year's budget. It includes all of our current offerings. We're not looking to cut anything currently. It's about $96.6 million. And on the right-hand side, we build up some revenue. Currently, there's a bit of an educated guess with state aid. But again, even if we only get the governor's proposal, we're going to be able to balance our budget. And we won't know about the state aid package until, you know, on or about April 1st, and that might even be delayed a little bit this year. You know, so worst-case scenario, we could bring our budget to the finish line, even with just the governor's projections, and still reduce our applied fund balance by $100,000. And this allows for us to maintain all of our current programs and services. As we start to move towards the budget vote in May, we start looking at, you know, what that looks like for the average taxpayer. And the average taxpayer has an assessed valuation of roughly about $6,000, which is a school district tax of just under $9,000. And school district tax makes up about somewhere between 67% and 70% of the average taxpayer's tax bill. And just a quick, real quick overview and summary, it's a maintenance-type budget. It's, you know, it's not the kind of budget where we're looking to make any big additions. It's basically maintaining our current curriculum and programs, extracurricular activities, art, music, sports. We're maintaining our instructional staff. So in some cases, we will see a little bit of reduction in class size, but we're definitely not doing any harm in that area. We're going to continue to purchase some buses that keep us on that schedule so that we're in a good place with our fleet, and we're able to do this within tax levy increase Here's a bit of a historical look on where we've been with not only our budget-to-budget increase, but our tax levy increase. And again, for next year, we're projecting roughly 3.51%. We have three important dates coming up that are related to the budget. We have what we hope will be budget adoption on Tuesday, April 7th. It's looking like that's probably going to be a video conference meeting as well. We got the budget hearing on May 12th, and then obviously, the budget vote on Tuesday, May 19th. We'll need to see how the COVID-19 issue affects some or all of these dates, but, you know, right now, this is what we're looking at in terms of our anticipated timeline. And that is our budget presentation for this evening.
Dr. Egan, it's Joe Bianco. One question, you mentioned, obviously, with everything that's going on now and the focus on COVID-19 and continuation of education and lunches and other issues, it's probably a reasonable guess that an on-time budget has dropped in terms of priority. Hopefully, maybe they still get there, but what impact does that have on us from a timeline and budgeting perspective if, in fact, they are late?
You know, I think, excellent question. I think we're in a good place because, like I said, we could simply go with the governor's proposal if that ends up being the final answer, you know, and bring our budget to the finish line and, you know, still be able to step down our applied fund balance. So, you know, I think it's unlikely that we're going to see any significant increases. But, you know, we're not in a bad place in terms of being able to bring it to the finish line. You know, we're going to have to just see how this evolves over the next couple of weeks, and hopefully, we know something more by April 7th. There is a piece built into the law that, you know, can result in the governor's budget just becoming the final answer by default. So, you know, we'll just have to see how it evolves in the next couple of weeks.
I think the thing we need to watch closely is any tea leaves or anything where the budget, the governor's budget may be better than where we end up with everything that's going on and dollars that are being spent and revenue that's decreasing at the state level. And presumably, if that were a possibility, and it was information we didn't have, presumably, they would give us more time. I guess there's precedent for that, right, that happened not too long ago, where things got extended, the budget got extended, and then the budget votes got extended, correct?
Yeah. You know, is it possible that, you know, the whole budget vote could be pushed to a later date? You know, absolutely. It's going to depend on, you know, where we are in that bell curve in terms of the virus that I'll talk about a little bit more in my report later. But, you know, timeline is a little bit of an unknown right now.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Egan, are there any cost factors that would cause us to have to spend more money through the rest of the year for cleaning the buildings and the lunches and everything, or is that pretty well taken care of? Are we a good place for that?
You know, I think we're in excellent shape right now. You know, the things that we have to be concerned about are, you know, probably related to the economy and the stock market. So, you know, one of the things we're going to see, you know, is probably our TRS and our ERS rate are going to jump. You know, the crazy part is, there was a point in time where we were all looking at our 403Bs and 401Ks and our funds, and they were doing awesome, and then all of a sudden, the bottom fell out. So, you know, we were looking at those retirement percentages and the possibility of them coming down, you know, but unfortunately, now, we're probably looking that they're going to go in the other direction. So that's probably one of the biggest things to just keep an eye on.
Yeah, there's still nine months, though, to the market to get to where we'd like it to be.
Like the optimism.
One thing I forgot to mention, I'm not sure if I did, that this meeting is being recorded, just so everybody knows, that's on and speaking. Is there any other, anybody else on the board that has any questions regarding the Since it is a budget workshop, I'd like to open up to anyone else who is here, if they have any questions regarding the budget. Okay. Once again, thank you, Dr. Egan, for this budget presentation. Thank you to everyone who's worked on it, along with Ms. Mian and the department and Dr. Egan. If there are no questions, I will go on to the consent agenda. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Onto the first consent agenda, the approval of minutes for March 10th meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the second consent agenda is the approval of schedule of voting details. I turn to Dr. Egan.
Sure. This is an annual resolution that essentially gives our district clerk, Patty Capabianco, the authority to begin all steps necessary to set up the May budget vote and election.
Okay. Just a question, being that we're in times that we are right now, should the date change? Will we have to make another approval? Or is this sufficient enough to go ahead with everything that she has to do and then just change the date?
If the date changed, we probably need to have a resolution at some point. Right now, we're assuming that it's going to be May 17th. Just a reminder for everybody who's on the call, if you could mute, that would be helpful. We're getting a little bit of feedback. Yes, we may, if May 19th is not the date, we may need to have a resolution that gives her the authority to set up the budget vote for whatever that alternative date might be.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education hereby adopts the attached schedule of voting details of the annual school district election and budget vote to be held on May 19th, 2020, for the purpose of approving the budget of the Kings Park Central School District for the year 2020-2021, and the election of one member of the Board of Education and directs the district clerk to take all necessary steps pursuant to law to have said annual election and budget vote take place.
I couldn't find the mute button, the unmute button, quick enough. I'm still getting used to having two screens open.
Okay. Are we good, Patty?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, on to new business, non-voting, our school district calendar. Dr. Egan?
Okay, given the COVID-19 situation right now, we're looking, so, two things. Number one, we're looking for later this spring to try to maximize our student instructional days. So I got to take a closer look at it, but it looks like the governor issued an updated executive order today, which I believe will essentially continue to put the state on pause through April 17th. That being said, what I want to be able to do is, I want to make sure that, especially the Friday before Memorial Day and the Tuesday after Memorial Day, that it's understood that those are going to be instructional days. And then what I'll need to do is, I'll need to go back to our Teachers Association and our CSEA, and we may need to adjust the spring recess either one day, one way or another, so that we keep within their contractual calendar year, if that makes sense. So, you know, again, the goal is, you know, we're keeping the assumption that, you know, we're going to be back in school at some point. We want to make it clear that those two days in May are going to be instructional, and then, you know, we go back and ensure that, you know, we make our instructional and non-instructional employees whole with their calendar work year.
Okay, so what we've done so far, the first Monday we were off was considered our first snow day.
Correct. And then that triggered the Tuesday after Memorial Day to automatically be a school day. So what I want to be able to do is to trigger the Friday, which may mean that April 7th then be, excuse me, that April 7th actually becomes an extended April break for our teachers because then that will make their work year 183.
What does that do for our board meeting on April 7th? If that becomes part of vacation, can we still have our board meeting?
We can, you know, and, you know, by then, maybe we'll have some updated information from legal and the governor's office on closure. And, you know, whatever calendar updates we needed to officially make, we could probably do at that meeting. You know, but in the meantime, I can speak to our two largest bargaining units, and, you know, we can clarify what those days are going to be.
Okay, so currently, the district is doing remote learning at present, and parents are aware that kids are online. So we would still continue to stay the way we are, school, online, have an April break where we go offline, but we're just getting, we need to know what day that April break will start.
Correct.
Okay.
Right now, for our teachers, it's looking like that's going to be April 7th, which is a Tuesday. It actually, and I know this sounds odd, but we actually have to add a day to the spring recess so that we can ensure that the Friday before Memorial Day is also an instructional day.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else, Dr. Egan, regarding the calendar?
No, I don't think so. You know, a lot is going to depend on, you know, where things go over the next couple of weeks. And again, I'll cover in my report, you know, a quick COVID-19 update, but, you know, right now, it doesn't look like, you know, I think it's a foregone conclusion that, you know, the earliest possible we could be back in our buildings is April 20th, and it's probably likely that that's not, that that's not going to happen either.
Okay. All right, well, let's hope for the best. Okay. Okay, on to new business, personnel schedule. Mr. Craig?
Good evening. We only have one item on the personnel schedule this evening, and that's the resignation of Ms. Deanna Jacobuski, a school librarian at RJO Intermediate School. So she will be resigning her position effective at the end of this school year. And that is the only item for tonight.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the next, on to authorization to sign allowance authorization with Crossroads Construction. Mr. Craig?
Yes, so this authorization is for toilet renovation at Fort Solong Elementary School. So this is using part of our allowance authorization. We have $30,000 as part of that, so utilizing $4,525 to do some work in the principal's bathroom.
Okay.
Are there any questions from the board?
No.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas project managers and architects have notified the district of the need to incorporate certain changes into the above capital project, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education approves the following allowance authorization and change order and gives the board president authorization to sign that documentation. Fort Solong Elementary School, Crosswords Construction Corporation. New business voting, the acceptance to add verified new vendors as district policy. All vendors must first be approved before any payment can be made. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, the approval of amendment number two to extend the general refuse and waste dumpsters that, Mrs. Mian?
Yes, hi. This resolution authorizes the district to extend our existing refuse contract with National Waste Services for 2020-2021's fiscal year. And this would be at the same rate as the 2019-2020 year, and we are pleased with this service. So it's a win-win.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board?
I'll.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We resolve that the refuse, waste dumpsters, and cardboard recycling dumpsters bid awarded by the Board of Education to National Waste Services LLC on June 5th, 2018, for the 2018-19 school year, be extended for the 2020-2021 school year to June 30th, 2021, at no increased costs. Next, the authorization to approve Eastern Suffolk BOSI's. Is that, Mrs. Mian?
Yes. This resolution authorizes the district to participate in the Eastern Suffolk BOSI's bidding program for the next school year, 2020-2021. It allows us to take advantage of the Eastern Suffolk BOSI's bid prices and the savings we allow us to contest at the CPF joint. It proves to be advantageous for the district bid services as well as items such as materials and supplies for a building, storage supply, paper, and industrial supplies.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached resolution to participate in the Eastern Suffolk BOSI's Cooperative Bidding Program for the 2020-2021 school On to new business, pupil personnel, the authorization to sign health service contract agreements. Dr. Colby Rooney?
Good evening. The following contracts will provide health services for students that are parentally placed in private schools located in the Smithtown Central School District and Huntington Union Preschool District. I apologize, South Huntington Union Preschool District.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We resolve that the Board of Education approves health service agreements with Smithtown, excuse me, I just lost mine, service agreements with Smithtown, CSE, and South Huntington, UFSD for the 2019-2020 school year, as indicated below. On to the acceptance of CSC meeting recommendations. Dr. Colby Rooney?
The following will include minutes from 43 Committee on Special Education meetings that were held that were held between the dates of January 29th through March 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached individualized educational programs, IEPs, from January 29th, 2020 to March 9th, 2020, 43 in total. Okay, new business voting, agreement between Scope and the KPCCSD Child Care Service. Dr. Egan?
Okay, one, one of the tasks that, um, and again, if everybody could just, that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, Dr. Egan. Everybody please mute because we're getting feedback and I couldn't hear you, Dr. Egan.
So one, one of the tasks that, um, school districts have been given is to come up with a solution for potential healthcare needs for, um, first responders and folks in healthcare. So currently we have, um, three things in the works. We have, um, New Beginnings, which is giving preferential treatment to, um, first responders and, and folks in the healthcare industry, uh, but that's a, that's a paid service through New Beginnings. Um, we have the town of Smithtown that, that is essentially on call if we should need them. And, um, Scope Educational Services, which, which is, um, its headquarters is right in Smithtown, has been working with, um, Suffolk County on a Suffolk County plan. So essentially what, what we would do is for, um, no more than $750 a week, so it's capped, we, we would, um, have the ability, our residents would have the ability to send their children to, um, free childcare if they are a first responder or, uh, in the healthcare field during the COVID-19 crisis. And, um, what, what we would need to do is, um, first sign, sign this agreement and then, um, Scope and, and the school districts would publicize this, and, um, the, the parents would have the ability to sign up at, at a host district. And then, um, the school district would then enter into an inter municipality agreement with that, um, host district. And, uh, you know, the, the closest host district to Kings Park is Northport, so that would be, um, you know, a, a very close option for, for parents if they need childcare. Um, and I've already been in contact with, uh, Mr. Banzer, who is going to speak to his Board of Education very soon about, um, that possibility as well.
I think this is the very least we can do for community members who are on the front lines helping others during this time. Is there anyone else who would like to comment regarding this? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the Governor of New York issued an executive order 202.4, which states that school districts are required to provide emergency childcare services to children of first responders and medical service providers. And whereas the school district desires to send students of the school district to the Emergency Childcare Services Program established in accordance with executive order 202.4. And whereas Scope Education Services is in the business of providing a school-aged childcare program in local area school district hosting sites. Resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached agreement between Scope Educational Services and the Kings Park Central School District for Childcare Services for first responders and medical personnel in accordance with executive order 202.4, and gives the superintendent permission to sign said agreement as well as an intermunicipal agreement with potential host districts. Kings Park would be considered a sending district. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, um, special reports from Dr. Egan.
Okay, what, what I'm going to do is I'm going to share my, my screen again and just go through, um, a couple of things real quick. Uh, just bear with me while I try to find what it is I'm going to share. Here we go. So, um, ju- just a, a quick update, um, I know the board knows most of this, but, um, uh, we'll, we'll be posting these, these minutes to, to the website, so I just want to quickly go through this. Um, there, there are three essential services that, that all school districts, especially in our area, are, are looking to accomplish right now. Um, one of them is meals to students eligible for free and reduced price lunch. We have, um, a grab and go program that's, um, up at Kings Park High School. It's operating Monday to Friday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Um, it's breakfast and lunch in a bag. Uh, we're, we're doing some meals versus via grab and go. We also have a breakfast bus, which has become, uh, two breakfast buses. Each breakfast bus is doing about 90 meals a day. So between the breakfast buses and the grab and go, uh, we're, we're, we're delivering or offering about 200 meals a day to less fortunate families in, in our, in our school district. We also have Island Harvest, which is a food pantry in our area. Um, there's, uh, they're, they're in, they're in East Northport, they're on Larkfield Road, they're in, um, they're in Green Lawn, so families have some options there. And some families in Kings Park have wanted to contribute. We have a table set up in the main lobby of the high school where SEPTA had dropped off some non-perishables, and, uh, families have been coming and grabbing off, off those tables. Um, families can also contribute to Island Harvest. And we have, um, Long Island Cares, which has, um, a mobile unit that, um, is delivering meals to homes from local area restaurants. And people can call if they're, they're in need, and people can also call if, um, they want to volunteer or, or if they have food that, that they want to donate. Um, you know, ba- basic, basic needs first in the form of meals. Um, obviously, we're a school district, so continuity of learning i- is really important. Um, you know, I, I want to share our, our administrative staff and certainly our, our instructional staff and our mental health staff have, have done a yeoman's job. Um, no one is on vacation, everybody is working from home right now, trying to provide the best we can in terms of continuity of learning while our schools are closed. We're leveraging teacher and school websites, various online applications, Google Classroom and email for communications. We're, we're asking our students and our, our parents to go to our website first and go directly to, um, the, um, the teacher websites. They can access through the teacher and staff directory at each school, and, um, every, everything is posted there. If the teacher is using Google Classroom, it should say that right on their website, and if parents have any questions, they, they can always email their, their teachers directly. We have, um, some information that we've shared regarding, regarding Wi-Fi, Altice, which is Optimum locally. Uh, I'm, I'm told that if, if you call this number, there, there are some free options that might be available to you where, um, you might be able to get a, a temporary account through Optimum. Some cell phone providers, I'm aware of Sprint and AT&amp;T, have allowed folks to enable the hotspot on, on their mobile device. So you might be able to enable, uh, personal hotspot, which might help with members of your family that, that need Wi-Fi at home. Our technology department has done an excellent job with setting up a help desk. Not only do we have a, a phone number that people can call, which generates an email which is sent to, um, the Office of Technology, but you can also email them directly at helpdesk@kpcsd.org.
Dr. Egan, one, one question on technology. I heard a, a couple of people, I know we, I know we were able to distribute a number of Chromebooks and, and other devices to students that might not have their own at home. Is that something that if somebody missed the boat or is having trouble with their devices at home that, that they can still access? Uh, and, and who should they contact?
Good, good question. Um, you know, at, at this point, we, we probably handed out somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 70 devices. Um, the, the problem we have at this point is, um, trying to meet the need without violating the, the governor's, um, directive to, um, you know, to stay home. Um, we're, we're also trying to balance need versus want. So, you know, in, in, in some of the cases, even, even the 60, the 60 to 70 devices that we handed out, you know, while the parent was picking it up, they, they indicated to us that, um, uh, you know, ma- maybe they didn't really need it, but it was convenient that, um, they have one more device in the household. So, um, at, at this point, I think we've addressed all of the, the needs that were expressed to us, either through principals or, um, directly through technology. You know, if, if we did have, you know, a, um, a, a minor need that, that we could quickly address, we would certainly do that. Um, you know, but I think our, our mass providing of, of devices is probably done at this point.
Thank you, and, and that's fair, and it was more if it was a one-off type of thing. Okay, thank you.
Um, childcare, I, I, I pretty much addressed that when we did the, um, the Scope Resolution. We got, um, adult ed. Uh, the, the board probably noticed that, that there were, um, close, close to 300 new vendors in, on the agenda tonight. That's because at, at some point, we're going to have to issue about 300 refund checks to, um, various folks in our adult ed program. We have continued to assure our parents that, you know, any money that is in your My School Bucks account is still going to be there, um, either for use later this year or, um, any balances carry forward into the following year anyway. So we've just been reassuring parents, you know, don't worry, the My School Bucks money will still be there when, when school starts up again. Um, the calendar, we talked about, um, board meetings, obviously, uh, we're going to be doing some, some video conferencing, uh, probably that April 7th meeting will be a video conference at, as, as well. We've, we've gotten a couple of calls about, um, SATs and ACTs. So right now, we know that April 4th and May 2nd are definitely canceled. Uh, June is, is to be determined, but right now, those, those June tests are still on. And, you know, la- last but not least, I, I wanted to try to put together, um, you know, where, where we might be with, with this, with this COVID-19 issue. Um, and if, if you watched any of the governor's addresses, um, he's kind of alluded to the bell curve and, and, uh, showed, showed some, some curves, um, in, in his, uh, addresses. So right now, we know the number of, of cases is, um, increasing rapidly. We're, we're probably, we're probably somewhere in here. Um, we haven't peaked yet. We're, we're still, we're still seeing a rising number of cases every day. At some point, we will level off and we will begin to see, you know, no, no, um, no new cases, and then those cases will, will drop off. Um, you know, we've, we've probably be in, been in this about 10 days already, um, you know, so we're, we're probably right at the end of phase one, but you'll, you'll see if you, if each of these phases are, um, you know, 10 days or so, uh, you know, when we start looking at the calendar, we're, we're not looking at what we originally thought was going to be a two, a two-week shutdown. Um, you know, most likely, this peak is probably going to happen somewhere in the neighborhood of, um, what would have been spring break, and then hopefully we'll start seeing things, um, die off again. So, you know, fing- fingers crossed that, um, you know, we, we get to the peak sooner, uh, which, which is a blessing and a curse at the same time, because that means that more people in, in the community and, and New York and on Long Island and across the country are sick. Um, you know, but we, we want to, we want to get on the downhill and, uh, you know, get, get out here so that thi- this is probably where school and, you know, the pause that New York State is on right now will become unpause, then, you know, life will get back to normal. But we're, we're going to get there. Um, the thing I want to continue to emphasize is that, um, social distancing is, is a must. If, um, you know, if any of our parents listen to this and watch this, um, this is no joke. Sleepovers and playdates and, and, you know, meeting, meeting at the park, on the playground, um, tho- all those things need to take a pause, and we, we need to treat this like a mental and, and physical health crisis. And, uh, you know, re- really take this, this seriously. Um, I feel terrible at some of the, the, the closures and cancellations that, that we've had. Um, you know, I, I had a, I had a parent reach out to me last night, um, you know, was very concerned that, that clearly the school musical was going to be canceled. Um, you know, we're, we're trying to, to do some things to recognize our, our students as best we can. Um, I, I spent a little bit of this afternoon writing a press release that I'm going to share with local area media, which has all the names of the students from the high school that were in the musical, both, um, cast, crew, and pit. And we'll, we'll get a nice little thing in the Smithtown News to recognize all their hard work. Um, you know, we're going to try to do that as, as often as we can to get, you know, whether it's Facebook or on the website or through my highlights of the week. Um, you know, unfortunately, a lot of things have been canceled and a lot of things will continue to be canceled. You know, things like the junior prom and, um, you know, things we, we wish we, we didn't have to cancel, but, you know, in the grand scheme of things, i- i- if we, if, if we look at this through a glass half-full and, you know, I'm still healthy and my family's healthy and I want to keep everybody healthy as opposed to what I'm missing out on, then, um, you know, I think it's easier to stomach. You know, clearly, we, we want to, um, get things reset and unpause as quickly as we can, but, you know, I, I just want to emphasize how urgent it is to, uh, you know, stay home and, and avoid, uh, you know, avoid groups and really try to avoid going out if you don't have to. And, uh, and that's my report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Egan. Um, with all the information that you had up on your screen, is there a way of you putting that on the website or were you going to send that to? I know you're so good about communicating with the community.
Yeah, it, it, it's actually already there, and, um, what I'm, what I'm going to do later this week is, uh, I'll, I'll probably do an update voice call and just remind people that it is there. And I, I haven't, I haven't received any questions yet, but I, I did, I did start at, at the end of that, um, document, there's a Q and A. So if, um, if parents have questions, I'll post both the question and the answer, and that'll just be a running document that's on the website.
Okay. Um, again, I would just like to say thank you for all what, what you've been doing, Dr. Cardizano, with the learning, remote learning, your, your whole cabinet, I, I can't say enough. Um, people really do have to realize, um, even though the buildings have been closed to our students, they are still running. From home remotely, we are continuing to do everything we can to meet the needs, not only our students, our not only of our students, our, our community. And, um, I just want to extend our thanks to all the different units that have met with Dr. Egan. Chris, I see your, you've joined our, our meeting. Thanking you, I see you waving. Thanking you and your team for continuing the education of, of our children. And for everybody who has done everything. I've always gone and said, "It takes a village to raise a child." And I know many people have been saying this, but this is when Kings Park shines its brightest. We really have always pulled together as a community. And even through this, I see everybody pulling together to, for our community for the best interest of everyone. I mean, I see things posted online, good things. Anybody needing help with, with shopping, anybody needing help with anything. People are, are ready to, you know, help people celebrate their birthdays with a drive-by, a wave wi- with a, from a car, from a distance. And like you said, Dr. Egan, it's social distancing that is a must. But people are somehow still trying to find ways to celebrate and make some normalcy for our kids as much as possible. And that's a huge thank you to everyone in, in our community. I would just like to open it up to anyone else, if anybody else has any comments.
Yep. Pam, uh, uh, Dr., Mrs. DeFort, if I may, just want to reiterate some of the points you just made, that you just made. And, uh, very proud to be a Kings Parker, a former educator in the community and everything that goes with it. Because the, the community, the district, really has stepped up to try to meet the needs in these unprecedented times, unthought about, in fact, you know, almost uncomprehendable. So I just want to, you know, thank everybody involved. Teaching staff has been absolutely fantastic. I haven't heard any, of any problems. The custodial staff, uh, you know, making sure that the buildings were disinfected carefully and, uh, uh, you know, just hope to get back to normal. But I don't even know what the new normal's gonna be, uh, in a few weeks, though. But thank you to everybody involved.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I, I would just, I, again, just echo the same. And just thank Dr. Egan and, and the administration for their leadership and, and getting us off on the right foot through this. It's incredibly challenging and everybody's working very hard. But, but staff and teachers and, and, you know, we've seen too, you know, our, our own kids and kids in the community that you hear of embracing, embracing this change. And, you know, I think, um, you know, so many parts of our life will not be the same. Business is gonna change, education's gonna change because of a lot of things that we're going through now. It stinks to have to go through it. And, uh, you know, prayers out that everybody in the community is okay and comes out the other side of this with good health. But there's a lot to learn and a, a lot of people leading the charge in that to, to get us through it as, as we learn those lessons. And again, the community, I mean, the, the grocery stores, the merchants, everybody's pulling together. And, you know, there's, um, there's a great bakery and a great butcher in town. So them and the grocery stores are keeping us all fed. So, um, you know, hopefully, everybody's doing well. But I just want to thank everybody, from administration to staff to students and families for, uh, for pulling together.
Yes. Um, I do see some numbers on here. So I do have to open it up for public comments at this time?
Okay.
If anybody has public comments and want to share, you can unmute, unmute your mic. Okay, no public comments at this time? Okay. So I'll just end this meeting. A huge thank you to Rick Combs for helping us to record this meeting. I never thought I'd have a board meeting. We're all out in our own space, but we did, we pulled it off and we're, we're making it work. So thank you to everyone who has joined us tonight. I would just like to say some important dates. As Dr. Egan said, our budget adoption. Our next board is at our next board meeting on April 7th. Whether school is open or not, we will still continue our meeting. And our next meeting will be posted as it was online, should we need to continue in this forum. If there's no other further business, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. I believe we're not going into exec. We had one before. If anybody wants to correct me. I think everybody has been working very diligently. And even though we're working from home, we still need to get up for work tomorrow. So if there's no other business, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good night, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Patty, I'll be in touch about signing what needs to be signed. If anything needs to be signed, we can talk about it tomorrow. Okay. All right, good night, everyone.
Stay safe.
Egan, stay safe. And keep Kings Park pride.
You got it.
Thank you. Bye.